I am pleased to call to order this special meeting of the Permanent Council, which has been convened to receive the Minister of Foreign Affairs and Immigration of the Bahamas. We extend a very warm welcome, I am pleased to do so on behalf of the distinguished delegates and all ladies and gentlemen gathered here this morning, to the Honourable Frederick A. Mitchell MP, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Immigration of the Bahamas. Your Excellency, Mr Frederick Mitchell; Your Excellency, Mrs Pollett Adelie Zonicle, Council General of the Bahamas in Washington DC; Your Excellencies, Members of the delegation that accompany the Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Bahamas; Your Excellency Ambassador Albert Ramden, Assistant Secretary General of the OAS; Your Excellency Ambassador Elliston Raming, Permanent Representative of the Bahamas to the OAS; Your Excellencies, Permanent and Alternate Representatives to the OAS Member States; Your Excellencies, Permanent Observers to the OAS, ladies and gentlemen. It is for me a great honour to welcome to this House of the Americas the Honourable Frederick A. Mitchell MP, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Immigration of the Bahamas. Minister Mitchell was appointed to his current post as Head of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Immigration of the Bahamas in May 2012, after having served in various high-level positions with the Government of the Bahamas. He was previously Minister of Foreign Affairs and Public Service from 2002 to 2007, and Chairman of the Bahamas Senate Select Committee on Culture from 1992 to 1997. As Minister of Foreign Affairs, he was instrumental in the process to integrate Haiti as a member of CARICOM. He has also served as Chairman of the Council for Foreign and Community Relations of CARICOM, is a founding Member of the Bahamas Committee on Southern Africa, and was Chairman of the Commonwealth Observer Mission to the Presidential Elections in Cameroon in 2011. Minister Mitchell has negotiated a number of important international agreements on behalf of the Bahamas, including the Schengen Visa Agreement and the European Partnership Agreement. He has a Bachelor’s Degree in English Literature from Antioch College, a Master’s in Public Administration from Harvard University, and a Bachelor of Law from the University of Buckingham. He has also obtained professional certificates of calls to both the English and the Bahamas bars. Minister Mitchell, the coat of arms of your country depicts the ship of Columbus, the Santa Maria, as testimony to Columbus’s first landfall in the Americas, where he proceeded to trade with the Lukayan people of the Bahamas. Ever since this historic first encounter between Europeans and Americans, the Bahamas has been accommodating to many in need of shelter, be they freed slaves, Americans loyal to the British, black Seminoles, and even pirates of the Caribbean. But your country, Minister, is also known for its unyielding commitment to the ideals of this organisation, of which it has been a part since March 3rd, 1982. Through these years, the Government of the Bahamas has worked with the organisation to advance on different areas: democracy, security, education, and culture, among others. No doubt, it is these ideals and practices, along with its abundant natural beauty and resources, that have combined to give the Bahamas the third highest standard of living in the hemisphere. Minister Mitchell, through you, we would like also to greet your fellow countrymen, the friendly people of the Bahamas; a people whose culture is steeped in folklore, traditions, and legends; a people who celebrate and value their community and their country, which they liken to paradise; a people whose country occupies more than 700 islands across a vast stretch of the clear, blue, and beautiful Caribbean Sea. Minister Mitchell, once again, I am honoured, on behalf of the OAS, to welcome you to this hallowed Hall of the Americas. I am now pleased to offer the floor to Ambassador Albert Ramden, Assistant Secretary General. Ambassador Ramden, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman, distinguished permanent representatives and delegates. Following that comprehensive introduction of Minister Mitchell and Bahamas membership of the Organisation of American States, I’ll be relatively brief. I wanted to welcome Minister Fred Mitchell, the Minister of Foreign Affairs and Immigration of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and the delegation, Mr Minister, on behalf of the General Secretariat to the Organisation of American States. We are very pleased that you visit us to discuss with us some of the issues which have been discussed over the past couple of weeks with regard to immigration, but of course also other matters. Yesterday, when we spoke with Minister Mitchell, the Secretary General, and myself, we discussed many more issues than immigration. And I believe that Bahamas, as a valuable Member of the Organisation of American States, plays such a critical role in shaping that policy with regard to the hemisphere on other issues. And we look forward to listening to Minister Mitchell’s statement this morning. I just want to say that I hope that your visit to the Organisation of American States, together with the other discussions which you had within the organisation, among which was the one with the Inter-American Human Rights Commission, are valuable to the cause you are here for, as well as to opening up space for a further discussion, a much broader discussion on migration issues within the Organisation of American States, following and in continuation of what the organisation has been doing already. We stand ready to work with you, Minister, on that process. I had the opportunity to speak a couple of weeks ago to Honourable Perry Christie, the Prime Minister of the Bahamas, on this matter. We understand the concerns, but also the need for clarification on some of the issues which have been raised in the media, but also among our membership. So I look forward to your statement, your presentation, but most certainly also to tell you that the Organisation of American States stands ready to assist in whatever way we can to assist Bahamas in dealing with some of the matters at hand. I thank you very much again for your visit.
I would like to thank Ambassador Ramden for his comments, and I am now pleased to offer the floor, I am honoured to offer the floor, to the Honourable Minister Fred Mitchell. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr Chair, and distinguished ambassador, my good friend, and also to Assistant Secretary General Albert Ramden. Excellencies all, good morning. Let me first thank the Secretary General and you, Assistant Secretary General, for all the courtesies extended to me and my delegation during this visit. As both the Secretary General and the Assistant Secretary General are expected to demit office within the coming months, this may be my last formal opportunity, the last formal opportunity I have to say thank you to you for your service, which you have both given to this organisation and its ideals. The Bahamas thanks you for your leadership. I wish also to publicly acknowledge the work of the delegations of all fellow CARICOM countries in making this visit possible, and more generally to all delegates. I want to congratulate the Commonwealth of Dominica and its Prime Minister Roosevelt Skerritt on the recent general election held on the 8th of December. And I want to congratulate the President of Brazil, Dilma Rousseff, who will be sworn in for a second term, I’m told, on the 1st of January. I wish to acknowledge the work of the Prime Minister of Haiti, Lorraine Lamont, who has announced his resignation from office, and I wish from the Bahamas you to convey to them all our warm felicitations. Mr Chair, on behalf of Prime Minister Perry Christie, the Government and peoples of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, I appear here today to deal with a serious matter: the reputation of the Bahamas. Nothing is more important to us than that in the international arena, whether in the hemisphere, or in the sub-region, or around the world. Reputation is everything. The respect which we have around the world depends upon our reputation. In Shakespeare’s Othello, he writes: “But he that filches from me my good name, robs me of that which not enriches him, and makes me poor indeed.” My nation, of less than 400,000 souls, thrives off its reputation. Tourism is our main business. People come to the Bahamas as tourists because they believe and perceive that it is better in the Bahamas, and it is. As I have represented my country in countries around the world, far from our shores to near to our shores, when I mention that I am from the Bahamas, the response is: “Aha, the Bahamas!” One customs and border control officer at the New York Airport, after I was coming off a long trip on a plane, said to me: “Why are you looking sad? You live in paradise.” The Bahamas is paradise, and we work very hard to maintain that reputation. Thousands of businesspeople and non-Bahamian residents live in our country because it has a stellar reputation as a safe place for investment and wealth management, a well-regulated, transparent jurisdiction. What we know, however, is that we must be eternally vigilant in protecting our reputation, correcting untruths and misrepresentations where they exist, and of course, ensuring that within our borders and in our external relations we so conduct ourselves that we, to the extent that our resources permit, adhere to the highest standards and best practices as set by the international community. And I am here today to reaffirm our commitment to the principles of the rule of law, due process, the international treaties on migration, and all the instruments to which we adhere in the inter-American system. Please be assured of that. This assurance goes out to friend and foe alike, and has become necessary because of the misinformation that has been circulated by two innocuous administrative measures that were announced by the Bahamas, which took effect on the 1st of November 2014. The policies were contained in a one-page document which advised the public that work permit applications would not be accepted for those people who did not have legal status in the Bahamas without them first being certified as having been seen by one of our councillor officers in their home country or in the nearest office to their home country. The second was that all non-nationals who live in the Bahamas would have to get and hold the passport of their nationality and obtain a residency permit which would be evidence that they have the right to live and work in the Bahamas. These policies should not have been a surprise. The political party to which I belong announced that we would be pursuing immigration reforms prior to our election to office in 2012. We announced that changes were coming in policies in the first budget debate following the general election in 2012. We announced in the budget debate of 2014 that changes were coming, including specifically, that there would be a requirement for the passport of the nationality of the individual. On the 28th of July, on an official visit of the President of Haiti to the Bahamas, we advised the Haitian government that we proposed to do so, and sought their advice on whether they could meet the expected demand for passports at their embassy in the Bahamas. The President indicated that they could. This was followed up with a similar exchange at the margins of the United Nations in September with the Foreign Minister of Haiti, my distinguished colleague. We, the Foreign Minister of Haiti and myself, have since spoken in the margins of the summit in Havana, Cuba last week, and the Haitian government has indicated that they will take measures to meet the expected demand, and for this, the Bahamas thanks them. In our conversations with the International Organisation for Migration, we have sought assistance for capacity building in Haiti to solve any possible problems in that regard. The narrative I have just unfolded is given for two reasons. First, to emphasise that this should not have been a surprise to anyone. Secondly, to show that in planning and executing these policies, we consulted with all of the stakeholders in the country on whom there may have been impacts. We met with the leaders of the Haitian community in the Bahamas. The Department of Immigration, which is charged with the responsibility for executing these policies, has an enforcement unit. Each day, they go out and do immigration checks. The press, both at home and abroad, keep referring to these as roundups or raids. There are no roundups in the Bahamas under my watch. Roundups are for cattle, not for people, and words make a difference. On the 1st of November, the Department of Immigration did what they usually do, and in the course of one of those checks, parents abandoned their children and left the children unaccompanied in their homes. This was later borne out by the parent in the press, who indicated that he ran and told the children not to open the door. The Constitution of our country empowers officers to arrest people who are committing offences on the following standard: a reasonable suspicion that an offence has been committed, is being committed, or is about to be committed. Officers are briefed on that standard and reminded each day of their responsibility in law to treat everyone with respect and with dignity, and to afford everyone due process. So far as I am aware, they have stuck to that standard, and the government does not sanction any deviation from that standard. The International Human Rights Commission is invited, with the Organisation of American States, to come at any time and inspect our procedures and facilities, and see whether what we are saying is correct. We are open and transparent, and have absolutely nothing to hide. Where there are shortfalls, we are committed to ensuring that those are corrected. Why does the openness and transparency and our support of an open and transparent process become important? There are three allegations that have been made that bear addressing in this forum, which go to heart of the matter of our country’s reputation. There is a Queen’s Council in the Bahamas who heads a human rights organisation which is connected around the world, and whose allegations have made headlines in the hemisphere and around the world. The specific charges must be refuted. He has accused the government of, and I quote, “institutional terrorism”, and then, I quote again, “ethnic cleansing”, and then I quote again, “running Auschwitz in the Bahamas”, referring to the Carmichael Road Detention Centre in the Bahamas. The latter statement alleged in particular that this minister was responsible for Auschwitz in the Bahamas. Mr Chair, words have meanings, and when a Queen’s Council makes such a statement, he must be put to proof, because certainly the Government of the Bahamas is bound to respond. Let me say clearly, there is no institutional terrorism in the Bahamas, no ethnic cleansing, and no Auschwitz in the Bahamas. No group is being targeted for elimination in the Bahamas, no mass murder is occurring in the Bahamas, and certainly none which is sponsored or sanctioned by the state. There is no evidence anywhere that this is the case, and we refute it absolutely. We once again repeat the invitation to the human rights bodies of the OAS to inspect at any time and without notice. The fact is that the United Nations Human Rights Commission has a representative in the Bahamas, and they have been to the detention centre, and they can say whether or not we are operating gas chambers and engaging in mass murder in the Carmichael Road Detention Centre. The remarks are so outrageous and absolutely irresponsible, and I condemn them without reservation. In that unfortunate gentleman’s latest press statement, he has indicated that he will bring the complaints to the OAS. We will meet him head-on, and we stand here unflinching in the face of those spurious allegations. Next, I would wish to address why the policies have become necessary. First, with regard to work permits. We sought by the policy to address two issues: the message going out to source countries that all you have to do is make your way to the Bahamas, get a friendly employer, and you get a work permit, and then you are good to go. This was driving irregular migration. The policy is intended to put a stop to it. On the question of passports and a residency permit, the Constitution of the Bahamas, which we received on the 10th of July 1973, the day of our independence, does not grant citizenship to people born in the Bahamas at birth, unless your parents are Bahamian. Unfortunately for many, they chose not at birth to get the passport of their nationality or a residency stamp, and live in a kind of no-man’s land until they reach their 18th birthday. It is at that time that the Constitution says that you can apply for citizenship of the Bahamas, but you must do so before your 19th birthday. The new procedures are meant to solve that problem of living in the no-man’s land. This will now mean that so long as your parents are lawfully in the Bahamas, and you are minor, anyone who is born in the Bahamas can get a residency permit to work and live in the Bahamas until such time as their citizenship applications are determined, should they choose to so apply. This puts all in this particular class in a better position. And I need to add that holding the passport of the nationality does not prejudice the right under the Constitution to apply for citizenship. Also, in most cases, where citizenship is not granted, the applicant receives permanent residence with the right to work. Many people in that class have been using a certificate of identity document instead of the passport of their nationality. That document does not evidence permission to be in the Bahamas, and so all official acts like the opening of a bank account or getting a driver’s licence are off-limits to those people who rely on that document. With a new residence certificate to be known as a belongings permit, this problem is resolved. This policy, therefore, is not about revoking anyone’s citizenship or right to apply. No one’s rights are being taken away ex post facto. This is about ensuring that the rights of people are protected, the exact opposite. What confounds us is how such an innocuous policy has suddenly become such a bete noire around the hemisphere. What has not helped is the irresponsible statements of a Florida legislator who has spread much of the information about this, misinformation about this, on the basis that she is concerned about the children of migrants. The rule, Mr Chair, is that when an illegal migrant is repatriated to their home country, the children must go with their parents. This is the accepted practice and norm around the world, and we do not deviate from that standard. There has been criticism at home and abroad about keeping children in the detention centres. The Prime Minister has instructed us, and we have found a suitable facility for alternative arrangements, and the Department of Social Services has spoken to the Catholic Church and the Church of God in the Bahamas with a view to identifying such a facility. And I was informed this morning by the Minister for Social Services that plans have been settled for the facility to house children away from the detention centre. Now, to the question of resources. You can imagine that this costs the Bahamas millions of dollars per year, money which we can scarcely afford. Repatriation alone costs us some $1.5 million per year. We would wish source countries to do all that they can to stop the flow of migrants. At one point in October this year, we had three days of arrivals of 100 people per day on rickety wooden boats. And we know that people have actually died trying to make these journeys. I pointed out to my colleague, the Haitian Foreign Minister, an article which appeared in the Miami Herald of an interview with men on the street in Il de la Tortue. In it, they said that the poverty was so extreme that they had no work, that boats were being built to set off to the Bahamas and to the United States. The distinguished Permanent Representative for Haiti, who is sitting with us today, indicated yesterday that this matter was referred to their Minister of Justice, and they can find no evidence that the boats being built are being built to set off to the Bahamas. And we thank them for that. We must, however, be eternally vigilant. The International Organisation for Migration has indicated that it appears that those who come to our country are mainly headed to the United States, and their stay in the Bahamas is mainly temporary or preliminary to going to the United States. What this means, then, is that this is a multinational problem, and all countries in our sub-region, Haiti, the Dominican Republic, Cuba, the Turks and Caicos Islands, and the United States of America, must work to solve the more deep-seated issues connected with this matter, that of poverty, underdevelopment, and political instability. So, Mr Chair, the Bahamas comes today to set the record straight on this matter, and we trust that we have disabused all countries of the notion that anything untoward is happening with the issues of migrants. We have struggled with this problem for centuries. We will continue to manage the problem, consistent with our international obligations and with the law. Now, to the broader issues. While the challenges of irregular migration and benefits of regular migration in the Americas are clear, perhaps more important as a discussion focus for this forum, and less discussed generally nowadays, is the contemporary phenomenon of brain drain and its associated negative externalities. It has become taboo in some corners to speak of the negative impact of brain drain on the developing world. However, the ongoing negative impacts, particularly on small developing countries, is also abundantly clear. This is the other excess that we as a region must contend with. As a region, the Caribbean, more than any other area, continues to lose a significant percentage of educated labour, of the educated labour and labour force in general. The reason the brain drain is such a problem for the Caribbean is because of the high proportion of skilled immigrants who migrate, representing between 60% to 90% of the skilled population in most countries of the region. And the cumulative effect of loss of the best and the brightest has the potential to further exacerbate existing levels of poverty and inequality in society and home countries. Additionally, for many of our countries, this also signifies lost social investment, which can come in the form of government investments into healthcare and education through the provision of primary and secondary schooling, and tertiary funding, and these prior social investments form a considerable bit of the GDP in many Caribbean countries. To further compound the impacts of brain drain beyond the lost investment in previous training, many of the skilled professionals that leave, such as nurses, doctors, teachers, and engineers, remain undersupplied in the Caribbean. So here, as with the challenge of irregular migration, there is a need to focus on long-term drivers and push factors on diminishing the hallmarks of often uneven and underdevelopment which continue to plague our Member States and which provide the catalyst for migration. In order to ensure more retention of top human capital and attraction of those abroad back home, our governments must redouble efforts at bolstering development, particularly with a view to providing access to local tertiary education facilities, economics that provide sustained and diverse job opportunities, and safe and vibrant communities in which citizens can live. Contemporary migration is a complex phenomenon that involves consideration of the individual’s origin and destination country interests. While today, it seems that much of the gains from hemispheric talent are skewed towards the developed countries of the hemisphere, it is we, as origin countries, who must take up the mantle of solving our own problems and work to ensure that our economies and societies are competitive given the global reality of today. Here, the OAS has a key role to play in helping Member States, particularly developing states, through helping to promulgate policies that enhance the natural synergies between migration and development, diminishing excesses from regular and irregular migration that place a drag on our development, particularly for small states, and focusing on ameliorating root causes which contribute to irregular migration and the loss of talent. Mr Chair, the OAS has a legacy and comparative advantage through the Universal Civil Identity Project of the America, and its project- and its projects, particularly those involving civil identity initiatives. All the pillars of the OAS are relevant to meeting the negative challenges associated with hemispheric migration. However, assistance in the areas of democracy, human rights, and citizen security all help states continue to work in a holistic manner to resolve issues that might spur migration beyond the search for job opportunity or educational advancement prospects. As I indicated at the outset, migration in search of better opportunity is a natural human instinct, human capital, as capital tends to flow where it can be maximized and optimally used. Notwithstanding the naturalness of the instinct to seek out better opportunities, as with the imperative of states to manage regular immigration in order to maintain territorial integrity, there are imperatives on states to get a handle on migration of nationals, particularly skilled migration, to limit any negative impacts on development. It is this imperative that we as a hemisphere must more seriously address in order to ensure a future of sustainable development across the region. The true developmental charge of the Americas for the next decade is that we must work in our countries collectively and through the OAS to gradually change the calculus which has spawned irregular migration and the loss of talent so that there's more equitable and synergistic benefit from the vast human capital of the Americas going forward. Mr. Chairman, my country looks forward to working with the OAS, to meeting the challenges posed by migration, both regular and irregular in the Americas. We are stand, we stand willing to host a conference of interested states in the hemisphere and subregion on the issue of migration. Mr. Chair, in 2012, I had the distinct pleasure of leading my country's delegation to Rio de Janeiro in Brazil for the Rio Plus 20 Conference. And I'm reminded that the negotiated outcome document was so adequately entitled "The Future We Want." Keeping the theme in mind, the Bahamas also looks forward to working with other member states to continue to shape the OAS we all want. As our hemisphere prepares for the upcoming Summit of the Americas in Panama, the Bahamas joins those who express the hope that Cuba will join us around the table so that at the highest levels of discussion, we will finally truly engage the full family of the Americas. I note the upcoming elections of the Secretary General and Assistant Secretary General, and I remain hopeful that in my lifetime, this organization can be led by a Secretary General from CARICOM. Certainly, an achievement for the organization which has passed due and which ceiling must be broken. As the organization embarks on management modernization, enhancing fiscal governance and general standards reform, the Bahamas remains committed to supporting this process so that our organization continues to strive to meet international standards and expectations so that this forum can remain the political forum par excellence that it is and will continue to match the dynamism of the hemisphere it seeks to shape. In parting, I take this opportunity to extend best wishes to all of you for a safe and festive season. Mr. Chair and members, in Shakespeare's Othello, he writes, "But he that filches from me my good name robs me of that which not enriches him and makes me poor indeed." The Bahamas stands by its good name. I thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much, Minister Mitchell. I would like to open the floor to delegations whom I wish to make any comment. I see that the Ambassador of Haiti has requested the floor. You have the floor, sir.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Monsieur le Président, Monsieur le Secrétaire Général Adjoint, Monsieur le Ministre des Affaires Étrangères, chers collègues et amis. Tout d'abord, je voulais saluer la présence de son Excellence, Monsieur Fred Mitchell, Ministre des Affaires Étrangères de la Nation Soeur des Bahamas pour sa présence ici au Conseil Permanen. En vue d'avoir ou du moins de contribuer à ce dialogue franc sur les dernières mesures qui ont été adoptées dans son pays en ce qui a trait à la politique migratoire. Tout d'abord, je dois éliminer vite dire que mon pays, la République d'Iaïti, en aucun cas ne souhaite ou ne veut mettre en question la disposition d'un État souverain en ce qui a trait à sa politique migratoire. Toutefois, étant donné que une grande majorité de la communauté haïtienne vivant dans ce pays est affectée par cette décision, nous croyons légitime de faire certains points ou du moins de faire certaines remarques en ce qui a trait à cette décision. Monsieur le Ministre, encore une fois, je tiens à vous remercier publiquement. Hier, nous avons eu un entretien respectable, cordial, et aussi franc. Comme je l'ai dit tantôt, mon pays, la République d'Iaïti, n'a pas l'intention de contester la décision prise par le gouvernement bahamien. Mais nous avons des préoccupations. Ces préoccupations sont surtout sur les conditions d'arrestation, de détention, et de déportation de nos ressortissants. Et ce qui nous préoccupe le plus, c'est du fait qu'il y a aussi des mineurs qui ont été pris dans toute cette vague de d'arrestation et de déportation. Vous savez, quand il s'agit de mineurs, quand il y a la situation des mineurs non accompagnés, ça doit attirer non seulement la République d'Iaïti, mais toute la communauté internationale. Aussi, la nouvelle politique concernant les permis de travail risque de forcer bon nombre de migrants haïtiens dont le permis n'est pas renouvelé à temps, c'est-à-dire de retourner en Haïti pour déposer leur application. Vous prenez le cas des ressortissants qui vivaient depuis des années aux Bahamas qui ont eu des permis de travail. Suite à cette mesure, vous leur demandez de retourner en Haïti pour aller à l'ambassade des Bahamas pour appliquer pour un permis de travail. On aurait cru que cela allait être en ce qui a trait à ceux qui sont à peine arrivés, mais pas ceux qui vivent dans le pays début plus un bon nombre d'années. Il convient toutefois de souligner que ces mesures posent beaucoup de problèmes dans leur application. En plus, des dépenses pour le voyage, ils courent le risque de perdre leur emploi dans le cas où le traitement du dossier prend du temps. Il serait plus juste que seules les personnes qui appliquent pour la première fois sont aptes à se présenter à l'ambassade des Bahamas en Haïti. En outre, cette mesure comporte un caractère discriminatoire à l'égard des haïtiens, vu que le seul groupe de migrants qui est ciblé dans cette disposition. Et si vous me permettez, Monsieur le Ministre, respectueusement, et lors d'une intervention que vous avez faite au Parlement bahamien, vous avez clairement précisé que les personnes sans papiers aux Bahamas qui sont de la République d'Iaïti. Dans le cas des enfants nés aux Bahamas, il faudrait que la décision de leur donner un permis de séjour soit applicable à tous, non pas seulement ceux dont les parents ont un statut légal. Un enfant qui est né aux Bahamas n'a jamais laissé le pays, ne serait-elle considéré comme un illégal? D'autant que la Constitution bahamienne lui donne le droit d'appliquer pour la citoyenneté bahamienne quand il atteint l'âge de 18 ans. Si cet enfant doit laisser les Bahamas avec ses parents pour retourner aux Bahamas à quand il aura atteint l'âge de 18 ans pour solliciter la citoyenneté bahamienne, si cet enfant le souhaite, ce que nous voulons, ce que nous proposons, cet enfant doit avoir quelque chose, un acte juridique, un acte légal pour prouver qu'il est né aux Bahamas. Maintenant, il est venu réclamer sa nationalité, sa citoyenneté. Si toutefois elle le souhaite à l'âge de 18 ans. Mais quand vous demandez à un enfant de partir avec ses parents et vous ne lui donnez rien, mais comment 17 ans ou 16 ans ou 15 ans après, comment il viendra aux Bahamas pour faire demande de cette, pour cette nationalité quand il n'a rien comme document légal? Certainement, nous comprenons que on ne peut pas déporter des parents laissant derrière ses enfants. Certes, ça aurait été mieux pour que ces enfants soient avec ses parents. Mais tout simplement, ce que nous demandons, nous croyons qu'il serait juste. Si ces enfants sont nés sur le territoire bahamien, ils doivent avoir quelque chose pour prouver 18 ans, 15 ans, 16 ans après, quand ils souhaitent, s'ils le souhaitent, réclamer la nationalité bahamienne, ils doivent avoir quelque chose pour prouver. Ça, c'est, nous pensons que ça aurait été une décision juste. Le département, il y a un autre point que je voulais faire et pour ajouter, c'est le Département de l'Immigration n'a pas attendu la date du 1er novembre pour appliquer ces mesures. Le Département de l'Immigration refuse déjà de recevoir les applications pour le permis, pour le permis de travail. Les personnes qui s'y présentent pour le certificat d'identité de leurs enfants mineurs sont avisées de se rendre à l'ambassade pour obtenir un passeport haïtien sans aucune garantie d'obtenir le permis de résidence en ce qui a trait au passeport d'haïtiens. Nous avons compris, et je crois que mon Ministre des Affaires Étrangères a eu un entretien avec le Ministre des Affaires Étrangères des Bahamas ici présent, nous avons cru que nous devons diminuer le nombre de temps pour l'émission des passeports. Il y a, certes, nous savons, il y a des citoyens qui vivent en territoire bahamien qui n'ont pas de passeport ou d'identité. Nous sommes en train de prendre des mesures en vue de les faciliter la tâche d'obtenir ces passeports. Mais quand il s'agit, encore une fois, de ces enfants qui sont nés là-bas, quand le Département de l'Immigration exige qu'ils doivent avoir un passeport haïtien d'abord pour avoir un certificat de naissance aux Bahamas, ça quand même crée des problèmes. Parce que une fois vous le demandez d'obtenir un passeport haïtien, cela va sans dire, une fois qu'il a ce passeport haïtien à 18 ans, quand il souhaite venir, et je suis sûr que nous ne va pas lui donner le certificat d'identité, cela veut, tout veut dire que il a été envoyé au Canada de ne plus avoir la nationalité bahamienne s'il le souhaite. L'autre point que je voulais faire encore une fois, comme je l'avais fait hier avec vous, Monsieur le Ministre, c'est le, les préoccupations de mon gouvernement en ce qui a trait aux violences verbales que subissent les citoyens aux les ressortissants haïtiens en territoire bahamien. Comme vous le savez, il y a beaucoup d'haïtiens, de ressortissants haïtiens qui sont sur le territoire bahamien, mais qui sont des citoyens qui vivent en situation régulière depuis des années, qui sont des investisseurs sur le territoire bahamien, qui contribuent non seulement dans l'économie bahamienne, mais qui contribuent à tous les niveaux de la société bahamienne. Le fait d'avoir cette situation maintenant, ils sont tous victimes des violences verbales. Ils sont tous victimes de certains traitements, je dirais discriminatoires, du fait qu'ils sont ressortissants haïtiens en dépit du fait qu'ils ont de la nationalité bahamienne. Et très souvent, il y a des bahamiens qui sont arrêtés par confusion pour une citoyenne, pour un citoyen haïtien. C'est pourquoi je crois que, comme je vous avais dit hier, il est extrêmement important pour que, peut-être de conseiller avec nous autres le gouvernement haïtien, si c'est possible, mais je crois, il serait bien conseillé à votre gouvernement d'avoir cette politique d'information et pour bon nombre de citoyens de votre pays probablement qui, très souvent, je ne dirais pas qu'ils sont de mauvaise foi, mais peut-être un manque d'information pourrait éprouver ces genres de choses regrettables. Et quand je me réfère à certains articles que j'ai lu dans des, dans les quotidiens bahamiens ou des clips de vidéos que j'ai vues sur Internet, les propos, les déclarations faites par certains ressortissants de ce pays qui sont inflammatoires et qui pourraient causer pas mal de problèmes aux gens qui vivent de manière régulière dans le pays. Et c'est pourquoi, comme je l'avais suggéré hier à votre Excellence, qu'il est, il serait extrêmement intéressant et important pour que des mesures soient prises en ce sens en vue de, je ne dirais pas d'éduquer, mais déformer. Les gens, certes, le gouvernement bahamien est en train de prendre des mesures pour contrôler son territoire. Certes, le gouvernement bahamien est en train de prendre des dispositions en ce qui a trait à sa politique migratoire. Mais le gouvernement bahamien a des obligations de respecter la dignité humaine, les droits, des droits et juifs humains, et aussi le respect des autres. On peut appliquer une politique sans toutefois nuire aux droits qui sont inaliénables d'un être humain. Nous croyons, en ce sens, que cette politique en ce qui a trait à sa mise en œuvre, nous avons notre part de responsabilité entre le gouvernement haïtien, comme nous l'avons déjà pris, et nous sommes en train de prendre des dispositions, notamment à cet article que vous avez fait référence dans, à quelqu'un du côté de l'Île-de-la-Tortue. L'Île-de-la-Tortue, c'est une île qui se situe dans le nord d'Iaïti qui est pas trop loin des îles des Bahamas. Des gens qui font des déclarations qui sont, qui disent qu'il y a pas mal de bateaux qui sont en reconstruction pour aller en territoire bahamien. Mais quand le Ministère de la Justice a dépêché une équipe de la police nationale pour enquêter, et aucun endroit de la zone, on n'a pas pu remarquer aucune construction en cours de bateau. C'est-à-dire, quand les gens veulent faire des déclarations, ils peuvent dire, ils peuvent dire n'importe quoi. Mais je vous assure que jusqu'à date, il n'y a aucune construction de bateaux dans cette zone. Et pour finir, Monsieur le Ministre, encore une fois, je tiens à vous remercier pour avoir porté cette question devant le Conseil Permanen et en vue de d'apporter certaines clarifications. Et cela nous permet, nous donne aussi l'opportunité de, de, de faire, au moins de d'apporter certaines précisions. Mais il y a quand même une seule chose que je voudrais mettre en phase. En dépit de tout ce qui nous divise, il y a toujours quelque chose qui doit nous unir. Et cette union, nous ne pouvons pas le trouver sans, je dis alors, un processus d' alors franc, sincère. Et mon gouvernement réitère encore une fois sa volonté de s'asseoir ou de continuer à discuter avec le gouvernement des Bahamas en vue d'identifier et de travailler de commun accord pour trouver des solutions. Quand nous croyons, il faut qu'il y ait la participation du gouvernement haïtien, nous y sommes prêts à contribuer, mais nous demandons aussi du gouvernement des Bahamas de nous aider à au moins diminuer cette tentative de zénophobie qui n'est pas digne de cette nation chœur des Bahamas. Je veux y croire que votre gouvernement va s'engager en vue d'éviter ces genres de choses, car pour la réputation même, comme vous avez bien dit, de votre pays comme un paradis, dans un paradis, on ne peut pas parler de zénophobie. Alors moi, à ma qualité de représentant du gouvernement haïtien, j'aurais été encore une fois, notre volonté de nous asseoir avec vous pour trouver des solutions et tout ce qui est nécessaire pour le faire, nous allons le faire, mais au-delà de tout, faisons d'autres mieux pour garder cette unité caribéenne. Nous ne voulons pas cette division. Nous voulons que nous soyons des nations chœur des États même quand petits, dans la zone Caraïbe, qui veulent vivre en paix avec nos voisins. En dépit de nos difficultés, nous voulons être une nation respectueuse des décisions des autres, mais surtout essayons ensemble d'éviter que ces problèmes nous divisent, mais de préférence, nous voulons cette unité qui doit nous enforcer. Encore une fois, je vous remercie, monsieur le ministre, pour votre présence et je veux y croire que à aucun moment, j'ai pas été respectueux. Si toutefois, j'ai l'été, m'excuse, merci.
Thank you very much Ambassador Edmund. I am pleased to offer the floor to Ambassador Vasyani of Jamaica.
Thank you Mister Chairman. Jamaica takes the floor to express our gratitude to the Honorable Frederick Mitchell, Minister of Foreign Affairs and Immigration of the Bahamas for his presentation on aspects of the immigration situation in the Bahamas. Recent developments there have implications for a number of CARICOM nationals and so we have sought to monitor them carefully. In fact, the permanent secretary in Jamaica's Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade has recently visited the Bahamas to obtain firsthand information about the developments. Against this background, Minister Mitchell's presentation offers to us further clarification of the situation. For this, we are grateful. Issues concerning immigration policy fall largely within the reserved domain of the territorial state. As a manifestation of national sovereignty, all states retain the right to determine who may enter their territory and remain as migrants. Similarly, each state has latitude under international law to determine the criteria for citizenship within its domestic jurisdiction. Nationality is essentially a question of internal law. At the same time however, the sovereign right of the state to determine its immigration policy and its rules concerning nationality is subject in some circumstances to international human rights considerations. Also, the immigration policy of a given state may be a matter of political interest to other states, not least because immigration policy has implications beyond the borders of the destination state and may be the subject of binding treaty obligations. Largely for these reasons, it is appropriate for the organization of American states to pay attention to the current situation in the Bahamas. But we also note in passing that questions relating to immigration policy touch and concern all four pillars of the OAS. For, in addition to human rights concerns, immigration policy may prompt issues about security, development and democracy in the destination state and elsewhere. On human rights in particular, Jamaica notes that the Bahamas is willing to enter into dialogue with other states, that the Bahamas is mindful of the need to meet international standards for the treatment of undocumented persons in detention, and that the government acknowledges the importance of the principle of family unity. We also note that the Bahamas has invited international human rights groups, including the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights, to visit the country. And we believe it is good that children will now be housed in a separate facility in the Bahamas. Therefore, Madam, Mister Chairman, Jamaica is heartened that the Minister of Foreign Affairs and Immigration of the Bahamas has offered his presentation today. It has certainly helped to place the situation concerning Bahamian immigration law in its proper context and has allowed us to bring a more informed perspective to the country's legislative and enforcement actions pertaining to foreign nationals. We are also heartened by the minister's willingness to come here in the spirit of inter-American cooperation, openness and transparency. In closing, we note the minister's wider comments on migration, including the question of the brain drain. These comments raise a variety of far-reaching issues for the OAS and I urge that we give them the serious consideration they deserve. Thank you Mister Chair.
Thank you Ambassador Vasyani. It does not appear as if, oh, I beg your pardon, I am pleased to offer the floor to Ambassador Sonia Johnny of Saint Lucia.
Thank you Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, let me add my voice to welcoming the minister to the House of the Americas. Minister, this is a house where we meet regularly to discuss issues which plague the region and issues which we think that we can resolve and which I'm happy to report that we have resolved, and I am happy to report that we have resolved many contentious issues in this house, particularly those among our member states. So let me thank you Mister Minister for taking this issue of immigration and the enforcement of your immigration policies of your country to this house to clarify for us number of issues which appear to have been preoccupied by the media of the region for the past few weeks. We are very happy Mister Minister to hear from you that in coming up with your policy, you consulted with many stakeholders within your country. And the policy is as a result of these discussions with your stakeholders. And so you have made here, you made your statement here quite clear when you say that your government, when it speaks about its commitment to inclusiveness, it takes this very seriously. We are also pleased Mister Minister to hear from you that you are opening an invitation to the OAS and most importantly, our Inter-American Human Rights Commission, so that they can conduct a fact-finding mission which we hope will put to rest a number of the allegations and criticisms which seem to dog the issue of the enforcement of your immigration policies in your country. For us in Saint Lucia, this clearly demonstrates the openness and inclusive and transparency for which members of CARICOM are known. As you know Mister Minister, members of CARICOM, when one of us is affected by allegations which can easily be refuted, all of us are affected. So we firmly applaud you here for taking measures to ensure that enforcing your immigration policies, rights are not violated and the principle of family unity is respected within the framework of your law. We are doubly pleased to hear that you have been consulting and having dialogue with the government of Haiti. And we are quite pleased to hear that you have made some inroads in your dialogue. However, there is still some concern which have been eloquently expressed, eloquently and comprehensively expressed by the representative of Haiti, which I think will most likely be taken in consideration, if you hope will be taken in consideration by the government of the Bahamas in moving further with their enforcement. Mister Minister, your invitation to the OAS and to the Inter-American Commission of Human Rights is very timely and we hope that this will be accepted so that we too will hear from other groups. You have presented your government's position, we too would like to hear the position coming out of a fact-finding mission and from other groups. We think this would give us, will put us in a position, an informed position where we can make informed decisions and of course, come to some kind of resolution on the number of these issues which seem to be plaguing countries within our member states, within our OAS. Thank you.
Thank you very much Ambassador Johnny. There being no other requests for the floor, I am pleased to invite Minister Mitchell to take the floor again if, in the event that he needs to make any further comments. You have the floor Minister.
Thank you Mister Chairman, and I want to thank all the delegates who have responded to my statement, the distinguished permanent rep from Haiti, from Saint Lucia and from Jamaica. I would, Mister Chairman, like to make a couple of observations largely arising out of the comments of the permanent representative from Haiti. One of the things I'd like to say is of course, the citizenship and immigration laws are quite complex and so not easily explained or understood. And it's my responsibility on the other half of my job to administer these laws and sometimes it is difficult to explain to someone who doesn't have to work with this every day. But I'd like to start with the question of the deportation of minors. Now, there was a video which started much of this misinformation about minors being deported. Those minors that appeared in those videos were not deported from the Bahamas. They were taken into protective custody for a couple of hours, in some cases, I think for two of them, it was a couple of hours and then paroled out to responsible adult. And within twenty-four hours, the other five children were also paroled out to a responsible adult. Those children weren't deported from the Bahamas. This in the Bahamas is not the case of masses of minors coming unaccompanied to the Bahamas. The children who were deported from the Bahamas a couple of weeks ago, and I think there is also a repatriation this morning, are children who came with their parents on boats as recently as a month ago and they were housed with their parents. Parents of course often object to children being separated from themselves. And in every case, the Department of Social Services has superintendence over the care and conduct of the children and the children are kept with their parents. So these children are not children that were born in the Bahamas and have any constitutional entitlement to apply. They came with their parents a couple of weeks ago or as recently as October to the Bahamas. So I don't think that that particular one applies. Secondly, children born in the Bahamas all get a birth certificate at birth. Our law requires regardless of nationality that within twenty-one days of the birth, you are to be registered as having been born in the Bahamas. Many people don't comply with that. If you can't produce a birth certificate, the substitute is often an affidavit of birth which is supported by a search at the Princess Margaret Hospital or the RAN where most people are born. And that suffices for evidence of your birth in the Bahamas. I think that is probably the practice throughout the CARICOM region where there's an absence of a birth certificate. So that is not proven to be a bar for people to prove that they were born in the Bahamas. As a matter of law, holding the passport of your nationality does not prejudice in any way your right to apply for citizenship at the time of your eighteenth birthday and before your nineteenth birthday. And it is not a requirement of the law for someone to have a passport in order to get a birth certificate. In my own country, when I talk about this, I take the example of Haitian nationals out of the equation and I would give the example of an American couple who has a child in the Bahamas. What they would do is as soon as the child is born, they go to the US Embassy, they get a passport for that child and then go to the Department of Immigration and get a residency stamp to show that their parents are lawful residents of the Bahamas and they get a residency certificate for the child. And that's all this regulation is saying. I don't think that there's anything unusual about that. The difficulty is that amongst a certain group, the practice has been not to do so because of their fear that the prejudice is their right at their eighteenth birthday, which is untrue. The fact is that this policy that we are now implementing would put people in that class in a better position than they have ever been. Because at the present point, they are no man's land. Many people have lived until their eighteenth birthday and have no documentation other than the certificate of identity which gives them a right to do nothing in the country. So they can't open a bank account, can't get a driver's license, often can't get into tertiary level institutions. So this should resolve that problem. The question is on the other end is whether the source countries are able to produce the passport which would then facilitate the grant of the residency permit. So we think that, we've spoken to the stakeholders, Haitian leaders have spoken as high as the prime minister about this issue and all of the issues which you raised at the table here are being worked on or are resolved. To speak for a moment about the question of prejudice and discrimination and what is said in the press and social media. Part of the reason we are here is because the misinformation that was spun either in the press or on social media about what this is, the government of the country is not responsible for what is said in the press or what people say in the press, although it may in fact reflect in some quarters what public opinion is. But I think every Bahamian understands the nature of prejudice and bigotry and discrimination. And certainly, the government does not sanction any of those things. And I want to separate myself from any effort which is suggesting that one ought to discriminate against any national group. This is a generic policy, not expressed in terms of any national group. Our prime minister, when he speaks, often recounts the story that the first black Member of Parliament was in fact a man named Stephen Dillon, who was born in Haiti, turned out to be the grandfather of James Weldon Johnson. But he was the first Member of Parliament elected, a black Member of Parliament in the Bahamas, and he was born in Haiti, came with his mother to the Bahamas after the revolution as a child. Our Governor General, who just retired, Sir Arthur Folks, his mother was Haitian. So Haitians and people of Haitian descent are integrated in the country. And my view is that what you're seeing, you say expressed in the press, does not represent the majority view in our country. does not represent the majority view in our country. What is of concern to a small country is the question of can you continue to absorb hundreds and thousands of illegal migrants coming into a country undocumented knowing what your obligations are in the international arena for the security of your borders and also for the future identity safety of your own state? That is simply unsustainable. And so we have an obligation both internationally and within our own domestic borders to our own population to ensure that, not that migration stops but that those who come to the Bahamas are properly documented to be in the Bahamas and come through the front door and not through the back door. And that is all this is aimed at correcting. I think those are the points. I would only reiterate my thanks to you for all the useful comments that have been made. I have indicated that the 1st of November is a commencement date, not a closing date or a final date. It is the beginning of an era of enforcement of a new set of administrative measures. And our Department of Immigration is sufficiently sensitive that on any particular matter, the ambassadors who are in our country, both representing Jamaica in the person of a very good friend, Pat Hanlon, the honorary consul there, Ambassador Rodrigue who served here, represents Haiti and the Bahamas, all of them have open access to the Department of Immigration, to the very highest levels of our government. The cooperation at official levels is good. There are no concerns from our point of view on this nature. But what is important is that all of us must be committed, in my view, to doing what we can to prevent irregular migration. It is dangerous, it should be stopped. There are larger issues which we have to face, that is the question of the economy. I raise that as an issue as well. So I think that covers the points. I hope that the dialogue has been useful this morning and I would certainly be happy afterwards or in the coming weeks and days if there are any further inquiries or concerns to meet those concerns. Thank you Mister Chair and thank you all of you and I wish you all the best for the season.
Thank you very much Minister Mitchell. Distinguished colleagues, we have concluded the consideration of the timely and important discussion for which this special meeting has been convened. And I propose that the Permanent Council takes note of the statements and comments by our authorities and delegations which will be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. This being our final meeting for the year 2014, let me on behalf of the permanent representatives thank the staff of the Secretariat for their service during the year. On behalf of the Chair of the Permanent Council, Ambassador LaCelia Prince and the Vice Chair, Ambassador Nirmala Batrising and on my own behalf, let me extend best wishes to one and all for happy holidays and for a productive and prosperous 2015. Thank you.